All right, we've just come out of a closed meeting and there are two resolutions that are to be read. Mario, will you do the honors? We do have a quorum. Be it resolved, Mr. Mayor, that Town Council accept to hire Mr. Brian Wilson as a Director of Protection to Persons and Services as of the 10th of November 2016, and be it resolved that Mr. Wilson's salary be pegged at Class One, Level One of non-unionized employees as recommended, seconded by Councilor Lalande. Should we not adopt a few further provisions? Well, if you want to, yes, well, be it also resolved that Mr. Brian Wilson submit to language assessment and if need be, follow language training in French as a second language. This, I believe... Do you want to add the BPP requirement? Well, not all companies work in this particular fashion, so I think we'll set that provision aside. Fine, so there's a second resolution also. Do you want me to read it? Yes. Be it resolved that Town Council accept to hire Mr. Jonathan Bureaux as well as Mr. Matthew Warel as daily operators on a seasonal basis as of January 2000, as of December 2016, and be it resolved that their salary be pegged at Level Three of the salary grid of the non-unionized employees, and be it resolved also that we add two patrol officers whose salaries will be pegged at a Level Four of the non-unionized workers' salary grid. Additional workers to perform additional work as seasonally required. All those in favor then? Carried. Let's go on then. So moved by Councilor Zant, seconded by Councilor Lalande, that we come out of the closed meeting. Fine, thank you. Item Seven, do we have any announcements, gentlemen? No announcements? Well, that's fine then. Let's go on. Question period now. If anyone present tonight has wished to ask any questions or comments, now's the time. If you have any questions or comments to make to Town Council, now's the time to do so. Mr. LaViolet, now would be the time, I believe. This is the only time that you'll be afforded the opportunity to speak before Town Council. Come to the mic, give us your name and your address. All right?
Well, my name is Lynn LaViolet, 1802 Wallace in Rockland, and my husband Ray. Ray only speaks English, so if Council allows me to do so, I can address Town Council in English. If you have any questions, I can always answer in French if need be. Ray and I are here on behalf of my mom. Now, my mom lives at 855 Belvedere, and she's been living there for almost 30 years. Now, we had raised an issue, Mr. Mayor, you may recall, some time back last May with you, with regard to a situation that was presented. It's really a civil issue between her and a neighbor of hers that started off with the hedges, of course, but when the bylaw was invoked with regards to the hedges, they took a look around and raised an issue with the carport there now. The carport, based on today's regulations, supposedly doesn't meet requirements. Now, it's supposed to be 10 inches away from the property line, you know, between her and the neighbor, and it's actually four inches away. There's six inches difference between where it's supposed to be, you know, to meet today's regulations and what they require. But this carport was built 30 years ago. Now, it doesn't make any sense that we're applying today's current bylaw provisions to something that was done 30 years ago. It was not altered in any way, shape, or form since that time. It's not a safety issue. There's, there are no safety issues. There are no security issues. The bylaw enforcement officers have stated that, but they wanted to come up with a variance report which would cost $600 for them to review and make adjustments as needed. This is an old lady, a widow, 75 years old, who's living on a pension, $1,000. I'm sorry, I just want to, I mean, there's a grandfather clause in here that should be applied. Well, that's, it's a 30-year-old case. I could not make a decision, you know. They were going to be served, and that's why I called Mr. LaViolet this morning. I asked him to come to Council and make a presentation here. Only Council can decide upon this. I can't. Mr. Mayor, after we spoke to you in May, just so the Council would know, we had the bylaw enforcement officer coming to our house and inspect it. He had no issues, nor did he have any problems with the structure. Naturally, there was a problem with the neighbor's hedge. He was supposed to serve them, but we didn't push the issue because we're not here to make any issues. But he assured us at that point in time in June that we would not be harassed. Mom would not be harassed over this carport issue, and yet, now, two weeks later, after the hedge situation has changed and the bylaw situation has changed a couple of weeks ago over the hedges, we were approached again. Someone else from that same department telling us that we have two weeks to respond. We're a bit puzzled as to what's happening right now. Mr. Grimaire?
Well, this is a question I'm asking. I assume everyone knows the answer, but if there's a new bylaw implemented, it applies to constructions, construction that comes into effect as of the implementation date of the new bylaw, but we'll have to verify with our bylaw enforcement officer.
Well, our representative has been dealing with this situation. Well, I think there are two sides to this issue. There's one that's related to the bylaw as it relates to the hedge, Mr. Mayor, and the other one has to do with the construction of the actual extension and storage area that is being used to store different things. It's not a carport, but it's more of an extension to the home per se. That extension has not been built with a building permit, so the building inspector has been looking at that structure. It needs to be permitted, Your Honor, Mr. Mayor, and they can't issue a permit to the property owner until that structure meets the zoning bylaw requirements. Now, planning will not allow this at present. That's under the, my God, what's the name? Oh, under the building code provisions. Now, were we aware, I guess my question is this, she's been living there for how long? Well, almost 30 years. Was it there when she moved there? I believe it was built by my dad the year that they moved there, the summer that they moved there. So it's been there for almost 30 years. Why are we subjected to the necessity of obtaining a building permit today? I don't understand. What I found out about that, ma'am, is this. I went down to the bylaw enforcement department. They asked me to perform a land survey, but I told them, you know, since the house was purchased, you must have a copy of that in file. They gave me a copy of that, and I measured it according to that survey, you know, from the corner of the house right up to the edge of the overhang. Now, the structure is only supposed to count from the post that supports that structure, and the overhang is supposed to be a certain distance from the property line, and it falls very, very short from that. You see, it's not a structural thing. When I look at it, I note that the county emergency vehicle can easily go through, a fire fire department vehicle or an ambulance, anyone can do that. In my opinion, it is structurally stowed. What we're really talking about is a really short distance with regard to the overhang. Or I was told, take it down. It's been there for that long. It's never been a problem before. When was the last time that the bylaw officer went down there to visit you? Well, it was the young gentleman that came in, in June, and on Friday, this Friday, we got another gentleman. We did have the nine, but he came in to inspect it. Well, if you recall, Mrs. Violet, that I stated in the minutes that there was something amiss there, and I told you that I was going to meet you with regard to this particular bylaw, and you indicated to me that the grandfather clause in light of this newly enacted bylaw, well, that relates to the hedge. It doesn't relate to the garage because this is a construction-related problem. Oh, I'm sorry. Well, even then, from a construction perspective, wouldn't it not have been grandfathered after 30 years? Well, that's the thing I was going to say. Half the houses in this city were not built along the parameters of what this city's code require. If we need to do something, Mr. Mayor, I actually recommend that this be grandfathered and that they be left alone. Seconded by Councilor Grimaire?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I would suggest that we ask our urban planner whether this is proper or not because we are governed by laws stemming from the province that oversees construction processes. Can we look at this and see if we can grandfather this and make it all go away if it's been built for 30 years? Isn't there a reason why we can't do that today? I'm just wondering. Well, it would allow us at least to take a look at the laws, the bylaws, to make sure that we don't overlap or overstep any provincial regulations. Well, we had until June, from June until now to take action. Well, actually, it's been ongoing since last September. So there has been some discussion between, well, unfortunately, the owner is the mother of, I believe, your mother, if I, from what I can understand, and we've been working through, Mr. LaViolet, to get things done. You know, it's been, it's been worked on. We've, they've been granted an extension and so on and so forth. So can we find a grandfather clause somewhere that would make it all go away and come back with this next time, make sure they've been served, but, you know, put things on hold sometime and we'll come back to you. Well, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Any other questions, comments, or any other questions? Well, that's fine then. Thank you. Fine. We're also going to enter into Committee of the Whole meeting pretty soon. We can still field questions then because I have other folks that do have questions to address of Town Council. Well, we'll, we'll enter into another question period at a subsequent meeting, right after this one, because this is a regular meeting here, you see. But we'll enter into a Committee of the Whole meeting, of the whole meeting, and there are questions that can be asked then. Council members' items? None. Consent items? Let's go on now to item 10, consent items. Are there any consent items you'd like to withdraw? Yes, 10.3 sub D, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to withdraw this for further clarification. Anything else? Councilor Levaire, would you like to read this? Yes, be it resolved that the following items, as identified under consent items, at the regular meeting of Town Council agenda of the 7th of November be adopted. Item 10.1, the adoption of the minutes of the following meetings, minutes of the regular meeting of October 17th, 2016, and adoption of the minutes of the Committee of the Whole meeting of October 17th, 2016. 10.2, receipt of the minutes of the following meetings, minutes of the Pining Committee meeting of August 11th, 2016, also adoption of the minutes of the Accessibility Advisory Committee meeting of September 13th, 2016, also the adoption of the minutes of the Clarence Rockland Public Library Board meeting of June 21st, 2016. B, or D, should I say, approval of the minute, minutes of the meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of September 12th, 2016, also the following recommendations from Committee of the Whole of A, appointment of a member to the Accessibility Advisory Committee, B, the sale of 2016 CR transport tickets, ticket books, C, appointment of Mrs. Spiero and Chantal Burel de Monsa as cultural advisory committee members, D, lifting of a point 30 meter reserve. Oh, that's the one that's been, that's been removed. Yeah, D is to be removed. F, the hiring of a professional firm to come up with a policy to ensure that the city of Clarence and Rockland ensure that there's sufficient quantity of industrial land available for development. G, tax reduction under the section two, under sections 357 and 358 of the Municipal Act in the amount of $4,182,000 as presented in the report. Seconded by, seconded by, Councilor Lalande. All those in favor then? Carried. Let's revisit now. Item 10.3 sub D, Councilor Lalande. Let me just read it. Be it resolved that Town Council authorize the lifting of the point 30 meter reserve described as being blocked 36 of Plan 50M-266 with regard to the low development site lot project or site project and site lot plan. Seconded by Councilor Zant. Mr. Mayor, you know, I'm wondering, you know, this represents approximately close to one foot, 11.6 inches, to be more precise. I don't see the necessity to lift this reserve that runs all along Chamberlain Street. The asphalt, I've measured it, measures 28 feet. The street itself measures 57.52. Why do we come back, why do we implement the point 30 criteria? Mr. Kerrie?
Well, this stretch, you see, when a development is done, this is basically a reserve or a setback that the city of Clarence and Rockland honors to ensure that all works are performed with regard to this particular development. Well, why does it only apply to a part of the street? Well, it's not even applicable to a part of the street. It applies to a part of private property. We own the street proper. So the city of Clarence and Rockland does not have any interest in keeping this point 30 meter reserve strip once the work has been done. This also applies to a stretch along Catherine Street, and we'd like to remove this setback so that the city of Clarence and Rockland be allowed to enter onto the premises to view the ongoing development work. It states here that it will allow access to Chamberlain North for future development. Well, I have no problem with that because the architect's plan that we have in hand clearly stated that we were dealing with a stretch that was situated right on the roadway itself. Well, that's fine then. All those in favor? Carried. So we shall lift the point 30 meter reserve with regard to the low development. Let's go on to bylaws. Bylaws or that the Committee of the Whole recommends to Municipal Council pursue the option of acquiring... Well, that's not the resolution that we're tackling at present. This is what we have before us. That's the, those are documents stemming from the Committee of the, or the previous Committee of the Whole meeting. Well, if you wish to, we can enter into a discussion with regards to this. Well, that's fine. I believe the last time we met in June with regard to this, we talked about and adopting an easement along the Vozen Street. We spoke about potential costs of $40,000 involved in all of this, and Council was recommended paying 50% of the costs involved. And we came to the realization that it would not cost $40,000, but $20,000. I believe that this was due to discussions entered into between Mrs. Collier and our lawyer who already had surveys on hand, surveys that had been performed beforehand, and we can make use of the same documents. It's not as expensive as was initially thought. This is not a new resolution, but it was forwarded to the Committee, the regular meeting of Town Council to adopt the easement and the, the city of Clarence and Rockland take care of all repairs as it would with all other roads that it has jurisdiction on. Well, the only reason why we entered into that particular provision was that we were dealing with a floodplain area. So the only thing, the only avenue left to us is to perform an inspection of that particular site. So do you want to bring this matter to our attention and that we deal with it tonight? Well, I would like us to deal with it tonight, Mr. Mayor. Would you like to move? Well, I would like to move emotion to this effect, but it has already been moved prior to that at the Committee of the Whole meeting. No, you may read the resolution tonight. We may vote on it. So shall I read the one that I started up on earlier on? It's because I said she'd raised her hand, so I, I was wondering if she'd just stopped me midway. No. You're referring now to Resolution Number Two. If you'd like to read this, this refers to the subject matter we we're tackling right now. So it's true that we now, we are now dealing with a $20,000 from the initial $40,000 estimate? Yes, we, we have that for sure, yes. And that amount is reflected in our, in the operational budget. I see. Well, I just wanted to make sure that... All right. That the Committee of the Whole recommends that Municipal Council pursue an option to require an easement to maintain the replacement of the water distribution system with regard to the fire hydrants, and that the Committee of the Whole refer this to Town Council, and that Council hereby accepts the essential amount of $20,000 to be paid 50/50 by the residents of Vozen Street and the city, and that Council hereby accepts that the city be fully responsible for the maintenance and repair of Vozen Street, including the water distribution system, including the fire hydrants moving forward, and that CAO be authorized to execute the documentation necessary to legally acquire and register an easement in favor of the city of Clarence and Rockland. Seconded by Councilor Grimaire? All those in favor? Thank you then. Thank you very much. Thank you. Let's go on now to bylaws. Item 12.1, 2016-147, to authorize the execution of an agreement with country Wi-Fi for the installation, maintenance, and operation of telecommunications equipment on municipal tower sites. Fine. All right then. Do any of you, by the way, wish to withdraw a particular bylaw for further consideration? No, that's fine. Item 12.2 then. Bylaw 2016-143, to appoint members to the Clarence Rockland Public Library Board. Item 12.3, bylaw 2016-140, to authorize the execution of an agreement with the Upper Canada District School Board for the before and after school program. Item 12.4, bylaw 2016-141, to amend zoning bylaw with regard to the 488 Lalande Street property. Seconded. Well, Mr. Mayor, I believe that we've withdrawn 12.1 or bylaw 2016-147. I didn't understand what you alluded to at the very beginning. Well, fine, let's just vote on 12.2, 3, and 4 then. All those in favor? Carried. Let's go on now to 12.1. Mr. Mayor, for the adoption of point 2, point 3, and point 4, you need seconded. Seconded by Councilor Zant. All those in favor? Carried then. Fine, I'm just keeping you on your toes because we still have a second meeting upcoming here. Well, that's fine. Let's go on now to, let's revisit item 12.1, bylaw 2016-147. Be it resolved that bylaw 2016-147 being a bylaw to authorize the execution of an agreement with country Wi-Fi for the installation, maintenance, and operation of telecommunications equipment on municipal tower sites located on Bouvier and Russell Road for a three-year period, and that this bylaw be adopted. I shall second this, Mr. Mayor. The question I have is this, Mr. Mayor. When I had occasion to take a look at the material with regard to the Committee of the Whole meeting that we'll enter into, we're, we have to enter into a signed agreement with Rogers Communications. My interception is probably not the proper one in English. Rent payable? Now, they want an extension right up to 2023, you see. Now, Rogers wishes that extension on those particular towers where this particular company wishes to exploit. Now, I'm in full favor of this particular bylaw. There are too many areas that are not catered to by internet services. Well, that's, that area is basically caught in between two towers. Well, I don't want to be stuck with this. Well, Rogers allow us to put up another tower on our water tower. Well, this is our water tower. Well, Mr. Keel, would you be able to enlighten us with regard to this? Well, what we have is this material that is before Town Council tonight. Well, you know, we're talking about having two companies exploiting the same tower. Well, I don't know, Mr. Mayor, if Rogers have a clause in this agreement they entered into with us. Of course, the Wi-Fi people are dealing in different markets. Well, it depends if there's an agreement involved because it states here rent payable during the extension term. Rent during the extension term shall be rent payable during the previous extension term and increased by 10%. Is this the one? No, I'm sorry, it's the other one. And the landlord shall not assign the lease or any interest therein without the tenant's prior written consent. You see, that's that particular item that gives rise to some concern in my mind at least because we're entering into a signed agreement with Rogers, and there's another company that wishes to exploit that same tower. Well, what this says, states is that Rogers cannot give its space away to someone else. Well, I was wondering if that was, you know, what you're telling us, if that indeed is the case. Well, that's what it means. I just want to make sure that before, that we verify the legal ramifications or aspects of this before we enter into a signed agreement with these folks. Well, maybe we can agree with it, and once we perform a check, once we check up on this, make sure that there are no problems with regard to the upcoming signed agreement. Councilor Grimaire?
Well, this is common practice all throughout Canada. There, Rogers is, exploits similar towers all throughout Canada. You know, in certain rural areas, there are no internet services offered, and Rogers is not interested in getting involved in this. They encourage third parties to enter into this type of thing and expand services. In Ottawa, they have Virgin, they have Rogers, they have all sorts of companies that enter into agreements. Well, is it possible, Mr. Mayor, that Rogers would allow other companies to exploit?
Well, look, look. Given that we'll be discussing this particular agreement at the next Committee of the Whole that will bind us until 2023, does this give us permission? Allow us to rent space to other third-party companies? I believe so, we can. I will look into it. Ask legal counsel if we can do so. Yes.
I agree, Mr. Mayor, that we, you know, we, we like to service our ratepayers properly with regards to internet access and all of it. Well, I don't believe that we're here to give Rogers exclusive rights over that particular water tower. Well, Mr. Mayor, I think that if we enter into a two-week delay just to make sure that we're okay. Well, let's just say that we can approve it tonight, subject to it be verified further, then that's fine. And if things don't work out in the meantime, we'll just revisit this particular issue. Everyone in favor of modifying this bylaw to state that this particular matter should be looked into? Confirmatory bylaw? All those in favor? Carried then. Be it resolved that 2016-148 being a confirmatory bylaw for all items adopted during the regular meeting of Town Council of November 7th? Seconded by Councilor Lalande. All those in favor? Carried then. Well, thank you. Regular meeting is adjourned at 7:51. The first meeting is over and done with. We'll start up with the Committee of the Whole very soon.
Regular meeting is adjourned at 7:51. The first meeting is over and done with. We'll start up with the Committee of the Hall very soon.